Thank you. Okay, do we have any public speak? Public necessarily, let's go ahead and we'll move on to agenda item number three, which is review and act on the purchase of a sweeper for the public works department. Okay, so Eric, do you want to go ahead and give us an intro on what what you guys found or do you do you want?
Actually, I'm gonna turn this straight over to Jay Tubbell because he's far more competent to talk about it than I am.
Okay, good. Welcome, Jay. Nice to meet you virtually, so.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Nice to meet you. Maybe hopefully someday in person.
Yeah.
Yeah, so one of the things that was discussed in the beginning with Eric, some different pieces of equipment and one priority was a sweeper. So I started looking and looking at different options and basically it all rolls up into I found a used sweeper in Delaware. I was looking for something that was a little bit out of the snow belt, out of the rust area. Hopefully find something that is a little better shape than something that would be around here. So basically, I think you got everything that I had sent to Eric, what we found on the 2010 sweeper, an Elgin Pelican. We went out and checked it out, both Tim and I last, oh, it was Friday and Thursday. Geez, I forget Thursday. Anyway, so you got the report. I'm assuming everybody got that what I sent to Eric to forward on to everybody?
Yeah, it did get forwarded down. I'm not sure if everybody got it or got a chance to read it. Hopefully they did.
Do you have any specific questions on the machine?
Did you get the oil analysis back?
We did. I actually got them the end of the day on Friday because we dropped them off on our way home. We went right to HL Penn and they were able to get it through and got it back at the end of the day. And we, the report came in that the oil samples were within specs and no action needed. So basically, you know, you can run the oil till next interval. You know, next change.
Alright.
So the oil samples came back fine.
Jay, that was 6,000 hours and change on that unit, correct?
Yeah, just under 6,200 hours.
What, um, what engine manufacturers in it?
John Deere.
It's got John Deere in it. How are the, what's the transmission in those things?
It's a hydrostatic. It's a.
It's probably a deer. Isn't deer international too? International trucks, okay.
Did, um, did you guys get a pressure tester analysis on the pump at all?
No, no, we weren't able to do that.
What, um, you know, like I, I mean, I own my own equipment, but I've, you know, I've run excavators for 20,000 hours. What's the, what's the life expectancy on some of those that you see?
Well, as far as what you see on the used market, if you know, they're well over 10,000 hours for some of those machines. And again, it's just all depends on how you take care of them. One of the things that was important to me when I was looking at the machine is how it was visually taken care of. You know, you look at stuff and you know, your seats are ripped, the interiors trashed, the buttons and switches are all, some are working, some are not. The interior was for that machine, it was pretty much spotless. It was in really good shape. The dash, the the cover over the center of the transmission, all the switches, everything was there, everything was operating, all the glass. I mean, it was, it was really clean. It was a clean machine. It wasn't, and it wasn't just because they cleaned the machine. So you know, that, that'll, that'll go, you know, for quite some time for my estimation. You know, with any used piece of equipment, no matter what, it's going to be a roll of the dice and alls you can do is do your best checking it out and hopefully things ever, you know, go alright. I tried all the components, all the brooms, some of the things that, you know, and I mentioned in my report to Eric, when you put, when you're running the brooms and you put it into reverse and it's basically it's hydrostatic, so it works off the pedal. Once you set the throttle to the RPM operating speed, you just run it by the hydrostatic control. But if you go into reverse with the brooms on, everything's supposed to shut off and return to travel mode. The brooms come up to prevent damage and that all worked. You know, it's just the little things and we did have an issue with a conveyor. That's in my report. The conveyor wasn't working, but the motor that drives the conveyor was, and it turned out it was just the key in the keyway had broke and.
Seems like an unusual, unusual failure. I mean, did everything else seem to move on the conveyor? Okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Check that out. So it was like a bearing seized up or something that would have.
No, no, it just, you know, that six, there's a little bit of slop in the, in the key on the, you know, the keyway itself. There's a little bit of wear, you know, you turn it on and off, you get the little shucking back and forth. And those are standard wear items for that kind of a machine. So it's, it's not an uncommon thing. I did get confirmation that the guys, the seller's mechanic came in that afternoon. He got a new key and put it in there and, and the thing was operational again.
Okay, so they took care of that part.
Yeah, it, and that was, like you said, to get that going again, it wasn't that big of a deal. Would that have to be, you know, the belt is worn, it's, it's operational right now. It's got, you know, at some point, we're going to have to replace the belt and do the shaft and the, the the sprockets on the chain are worn. Not to where they can't be used right now, but you know, we estimate probably about $6,000 to put things back into shape. There's a shield underneath that was missing, a vinyl fabric shield, which is really not a big deal, other than we'd have to get that in there because that prevents the fines from the, when you're sweeping to get up into the engine compartment. It's just a, it's like a guard. Other than that, I mean, it, the machine is what it is. I personally, I think it would be a good machine. Typically, average around 500 hours for a a year for sweeping. For Andover being a little smaller miles wise, it would probably be a little less than that. I don't think it would take 500 hours to sweep the whole town.
Eric, do you know how much that'll expect it to take typically? How much time we spend sweeping? I was curious about that. So it's, it's good input.
Yeah, I looked at that and, and Eddie, I think in the past, took somewhere around 12 or 13 days to sweep the whole town initially in the spring. And then we used the sweeper again as part of chip sealing. Now, we may not have to do all of that if we include it in the contract with whoever's doing the chip sealing. But you know, you could certainly run another three or four days use. So it, it doesn't get, it's not used constantly, which is one of the reasons why we think we can get away with a used machine because we're not going to be putting an enormous number of hours on.
Erica, what, what was the price again for this, this unit?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty nine nine.
Sixty nine nine and where would that 6,000 come from? You may have already told us, but where'd that 6,000 come to repair or come from?
My understanding is that we had, was approved for up to $100,000.
I got you.
For the sweeper. So I'm, and that's, I'm not sure how the towns worked it in the past. But and plus we'd have to get the machine shipped to us. So my, when I, if, if it passes, I'm gonna try to negotiate with the seller to see if he'll at least sell it to us and he ships it to us. So I estimate shipping will be around $3,000. Could be a little bit more, but I don't expect it to be much more than that if, if he would not ship it. You know, transport it to us himself. And then, you know, any repairs that we would need to do. You know, there's a few items that we would have to do right away and we would probably want to you know, use it as it is after we get, like the shield is one of the important things that I would want to make sure the shield underneath that vinyl fabric shield was really not a big deal, but before we go out and use it, truly use it. The belt, the conveyor, you know, now that it's operational, we could continue to use that for a little bit. And then just make sure we got all our, everything, you know, make the list. I know there's a couple of hydraulic leaks. One of, one of them's just a gasket on top of the tank at the filter housing. Not a big deal there. You know, it's little things. So we, you know, do that, but you know, I think we'd have the extra funds just to, and again, it depends on the board.
Part, part they're readily available for this machine?
Oh, yes. Yeah. One of the things that I discussed with the salesman from, which is CN Wood. They're the New England dealership that sells Elgin products and along with a bunch of other equipment. And they, geez, what'd I say that? They are in the closest one to us in North Haven, Connecticut. And the salesman and support staff, they're around all the time. They're always driving by, going to different places. So and I had quite a lengthy discussion with him and he would have no problem coming out, sending even one of his guys out to assess the machine. If we needed any additional training, they can help us with training, which I don't think that would be a big deal. We can do that ourselves. I've got, I'm pretty familiar with this machine myself. But if there is any adjustments that need to be made to the electronics or anything like that, like there's down pressure, there's settings for the brooms to put a certain amount of down pressure. So if, if that needed to be adjusted or anything, they're readily available. So yes, there's plenty of support. And he did also tell me that this particular model, if we were looking for a used machine, we would want the NP, which is the newer, newer model.
Okay, thanks.
So a couple of things real quick in terms of the 6,000 in potential repairs. So we right now have enough money in the public works, you know, vehicle maintenance fund to cover that fairly readily. So that portion wouldn't, if, if we had to spend a portion for that right now, we certainly could. We've been lucky this year where we haven't really had any major equipment repairs, at least to this point.
You know, you know, Jay's probably pretty obviously familiar with this type of equipment, this particular model and stuff. Can we expect to have to put in 1,000 to 2,000 annually? Is that just part of the deal with this type of equipment or not necessarily? Once we keep it up and running and, I mean, obviously you have maintenance, you have consumables, you have the belts, you're gonna have to do, you know, they're gonna wear.
Right. Well, you're gonna have the brooms, you're gonna have to put on there and, and that again, depending on how much sweeping you do, you get a couple of changes in a season, a couple sets of brooms. So that's gonna run. That'll probably run into 1,000 area just for brooms, give or take. As far as the belt, the belt should last quite, you know, the conveyor, that should last quite some time. I, you know, at 6,000 hours, I would guess, I would estimate that maybe that belt's been changed at least once. I don't think it's been changed at, you know, beyond that, that it probably, it's on its second belt right now, conveyor belt. Unless, you know, unless a setting, because once you put them on there, you know, there's adjustments to make sure that it travels in the correct, you know, and if, for some reason it gets off to one side, then it hits the edge or something and wears it out, which that hat, that's, I've seen that happen. But usually you catch, usually you catch that when you're, because you inspect that stuff every day. Every time you're using it, you run it, make sure everything's working correctly before you take off. And at the end of the day, when you're cleaning it.
Really none of this stuff is probably any different than the sweeper we have now or any other sweeper you're gonna use probably, right? So.
Right.
Jay?
Yes.
It's Louise. Maybe Eric would know more. Is our staff capable of repairing what needs to be repaired or do they have to be? Does the stuff have to be sent out?
No, we can do this in-house. The stuff that needs to be done right now, we can do in-house. If there was something electronic with it, I would say we'd probably have to bring somebody in because they'd have to, you know, plug into the machine into the computers. But as far as the pieces that need to be done, yeah, that, that's not a problem.
What about regular maintenance?
Regular maintenance? Yes, we can do that in-house.
Louise, we don't technically have a mechanic, but right now, Tim Higley has basically functioned as the town's mechanic. So in terms of standard hydraulic stuff, all the normal equipment, you know, we do, we do the majority of the service in-house. There are definitely some things that we have to, to farm out, but, but most is done in-house.
Okay, thanks.
In fact, there's no way we would have ever been able to keep the last sweeper we had going as long as it, as it did, if we weren't doing the maintenance in-house because that thing has just chewed up an enormous amount of time, keeping it running just because of its age.
Jay, I have one, one more question. You, you talked about the, the dealership where the sweeper is. Did you lock him in on a $3,000 charge to deliver it?
No.
Okay, because it just seems to me there's a lot of other contractors locally that would hook up their low bed and, you know, for a fee shoot down to Delaware and load it up and bring it back to Andover, maybe less, less expensive.
Oh, oh, definitely. My, my thing would be, I want to, I want to try to get him to bring it for the cost of the machine. That's, you know, I would like to have him deliver it if he's willing to do it.
That's built into the cost of the, of the, of the 60,000 or whatever it was?
Sixty nine nine.
Sixty nine nine, that's built into that?
No, it's, he's asking 69.9 for it. And I, and I did not discuss any price with him. You know, other than his, his advertised price is 69.9.
I, I do, I, I know, as you know, there's some local contractors that would be more than willing for, you know, that just to get the work to, you know, and then fully insured to go down and get it and bring it home locally.
Correct. No, I, I understand that, but if, if, if he's willing to do it for 69.9.
Oh, yeah, I got you. Okay.
You know, and, and deliver it, then they'll let him deliver it.
Good luck.
Well, alls I can do is try.
Yeah, I understand. Good luck.
You know.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it, again, talking with the salesman from CN Wood, you know, he feels that the price is fair, but there's also room to move on it. And it really, it depends on the seller. And, you know, the seller, you know, there's maybe other people in waiting on the sidelines.
I, I would make it a deal breaker if, if he, if he won't include it in the cost.
Right.
Any other questions for Eric or Jay?
I just was gonna make a comment. I've bought a lot of used equipment. I rarely do I buy new. I have backhoes, excavators, skid steers, you know. I'm comfortable with it. I'm a good mechanic. I mean, if Jay and those guys like it, we got a good oil analysis. I mean, it is a gamble. Sometimes things can grenade. But if we have $100,000 set aside, worst case scenario, even if the engine grenade it, you, you still have room there to fix it. And that's just my two cents.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, well, so CIP, when we discussed this, we hadn't fully settled on a machine. We were just looking at it. The, the initial discussion was, is this a piece of equipment we feel comfortable, we could buy used? Because in truth, most stuff we buy new. You know, and there, there's a certainty involved in buying something new that you don't have with used. And, you know, we kind of looked at it and, and the reality is, we do not have the cash, you know, for a new sweeper. A new sweeper today is, this model new is about $233,000 new. You know, and because we don't use it, we don't put a ton of hours on it. We thought this was one where we could, we would be better off financially, even though it's not going to last as long as a new one, buying used. So the, you know, once you make that decision, the question is just, you know, how much are you willing to pay for a used one? You know, obviously you can pay more and get one with less hours and less years on it, or you can pay less. You know, you can buy ones, you know, we'll sell you one that's 35 years old, really cheap, you know? Seems like it's a reasonable investment for the town, given the cost of a new one. And we should get, you know, quite a few years of service out of this, hopefully fairly trouble free.
I have one last question for Eric. The Board of Selectmen on board with this?
We've talked about it. The Board of Selectmen hasn't made a motion to that effect yet. But more because their meetings don't really align. Yeah. But in the sense, really, the two boards that have to bless this are CIP and Board of Finance.
You've been talking about the need to replace a sweeper for a while, so it wouldn't, it's not going to be a prize to anybody. We know what the other one's flying in condition.
No, it's this, buying a new sweeper this year has been our, in our capital plan for almost four years.
I just, I just don't want to get blindsided by the Board of Selectmen if, if somebody has an issue with it, that's all. Or, or you guys. I'm good.
Jay?
Yes.
Did you happen to ask about any type of warranty or is it off the lot? You're done?
Yeah, that, there would be no, no warranty on that.
Okay.
They don't, it's, it's a private seller. It's not, it's not through a dealership.
Right.
That would offer a, you know, 1,200 mile warranty or something like that. I will tell you that, you know, Tim, when he looked, you know, over the machine, I had him looking over the mechanicals of it and, and a lot to do with the engine. When you lift up, when you pull back the hood on that, because the engine's to the rear of that machine, it pretty much exposes everything. And, you know, other than the hy, the little hydraulic leak at the top of the hydraulic tank where the filter housing is, and the hoses are good. He checked in the radiator, you know, before we even started it up, we pulled the radiator cap off to look to see, you know, sometimes you get that funky film, anybody knows, on the inside of the radiator cap. You know, just pulling the dipstick, looking at the oil, you know, the, just what's on the dipstick before we did anything. And, you know, what you could see of the hydraulic oil. All the hoses are clean. There were a couple of hoses that were changed. You know, nothing looks, it was, it was in good shape. Belts were good. You know, he didn't see anything and he, he said, he felt that it was, you know, a pretty good machine for what we were looking at.
If you knew Tim, that would be high praise.
Yeah.
I have another question. The tires, are the tires in good shape?
Yes.
Need a place, okay.
No, tires are good shape.
Got another one. Have you researched the seller? You know how sometimes on eBay, there's seller feedback and all that? Is he in the category?
I did not. And the, the broker is in South Carolina. The one that advertised it on Machinery Trader. And the seller, which is in Delaware, it's like, you know, he works with this broker. You know, I, to be honest with you, I didn't even think about it. The shop that we were at was a big shop and it was clean. He's got other construction equipment there. Stuff that's for sale, stuff that is, you know, is his own because he, you know, he does, he's a contractor. He does construction work, does paving, does drainage, does the whole, you know, a lot of time, construction work. He's got two big buildings. One, one where the equipment was, where the sweeper was. And then after we ended up driving it around in his lot, we drove it over to his other building where he does this mechanical work, which was warm. He had, you know, he has that one heated. The other one, he doesn't heat it too much unless he needed. And he's got a real nice shop. So I guess if that says anything, you know, I don't know.
That, that actually usually says a lot about a shop. My opinion anyway. Other questions or comments? Anybody care to make a motion?
One last question.
Yep.
Interstate fees, because you're going from one state to another, would there be any fees involved?
No, the only fee that would be transportation fees would be the tolls be added on.
So, so.
You mean as far as like a tax or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, because if he delivers from one state to another, there might be a fee.
No, I had, I had that, I bought a machine for Lebanon from Kentucky. And we bought a grader and that came through with no problem at all. No issues. I've never had it. I've never heard of anything like that.
Okay.
Anything else? Questions? No?
And so everybody knows, right now we have basically $81,000 in the public works capital equipment fund. So that's what, what we have on hand. That's already been allocated for public works equipment.
For this year. For this year. Well, if, uh, anybody wanna care to make a motion about the purchase of this or, or otherwise making recommendation on how we approach it. Um, we have Jay's rec, Jay's suggestion and Eric's thought to offer the asking price, but request the, uh, seller to cover the shipping. Seems like a reasonable way to approach it, but.
Mark, I'll make a motion to, uh, purchase the sweeper based on, uh, Jay and, uh, Tim's, uh, uh, thorough examination of it. Uh, but I would like to, again, I'd like to also that, that transportation, uh, uh, question, uh, to that motion. If we get, if we get it transported to Andover, less expensive than the, uh, than the, uh, contractor wants to do, which we don't know yet. Um, then that's, that's part of my motion. For this, for discussion.
So you're just suggesting that for that price that they wanna, we should try to get them to transport it? If not, we, we go local? Is that what you're suggesting?
We, we, we don't know right now how, how, how much it's gonna cost to get the machine here.
Yeah.
If we can get it here, less expensive by a local contractor that has the equipment to shoot down to Delaware, you know, and I know many, uh, and bring it back to the town of Andover, I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, it's probably worth getting a ballpark estimate on that before, before we make an offer, so, yeah.
I'll, I'll leave that up to Jay. Seems to be a good negotiator, so.
What is equipment right now? Three bucks a mile to move it roughly?
I don't think it's much more than that, uh, Dave.
Okay, so you know, what's, what is, what's the mileage to Delaware?
It was, uh, I think it was about two hundred and fifty-six.
Fifty-six, yeah. Three bucks a mile seems cheap for a big truck like that, but maybe I'm off. I don't know. Um, my only suggestion would be, you know, I, I'd buy and sell a lot of stuff, so I, my, my thought would be offer sixty-five, see what he counters that, and then you have the room to negotiate delivery. That's just my two cents.
Well, it sounds like we, we're gonna live some of the negotiation. Uh, you know, uh, responsibility in, in Jay and or Eric's and Jay's hands. Um, I'd send around some suggested language if we wanna do a, a motion. Uh, what we could do is motion to authorize, uh, the town to purchase the equipment. You know, give them a, a cap, which would cover, you know, shipping and or, and, and purchase, you know, to go no higher than, you know, recommend, or the suggestion was made is seventy-five thousand dollars, which sounds reasonable. I don't think we should have to hit that. I would think we would get it, be able to do it less.
Mark, I'll amend my motion to that, to that, uh, exact point, uh, up to seventy-five thousand dollars to get the, purchase the machine and get it here.
Okay. So that if we wanna specify this particular machine, the, um, the suggested motion language was to motion that town, that the town, or we authorize the town administrator to purchase and have delivered the, uh, twenty-ten Elgin Pelican Road Sweeper, um, with sixty-two hundred hours and spend up to seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, from the Public Works Capital Equipment Fund, uh, as budgeted for the twenty to twenty-one fiscal year. Does that sound appropriate?
Yes.
We could have the motion stated thusly.
Did you wanna add the statement, if local transportation is available less expensively, do you use that option to satisfy Kurt's concern?
We, we, we can't. I mean, the, the thing is, I would expect you guys to act prudently and therefore, you know, look for your different transportation options in the same way that we wanna, you know,
Understood.
Offer them a low mount and start, right? So it's just part of the negotiation process. So I, I think that's part of that process i- in my view, but we can certainly add it to the motion.
That's kind of what I was looking at.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, with the suggestion, I guess that, uh, we get an estimate on local transportation so that we have a fair, you know, evaluative or fair basis of evaluation on, on the offer as negotiated.
Can, can I say, I, I don't know if I can or not. Is it okay if I speak?
Yeah, this, yeah, well, we just, we set the motion out, um,
You're, you're ex officio, remember.
Okay, so I'm all about saving as much money as we can. It just, uh, I, you know, I, I didn't wanna overstep or try to do something with the seller before I really knew what, what I could do. Um, you know, do I think we can save, you know, negotiate a few thousand dollars less for the cost of the machine? I certainly hope so. Um, you know, but that, again, that's not a guarantee. You could say flat out, nope, I'm, that sixty-nine nine is, that's my bottom. And as far as transportation is concerned, uh, if he would sell it to us for sixty-nine nine and he bring it to us, you know, as part of the deal, great, we saved a little bit of money. Uh, if we have to transport it, I would certainly look for somebody local. There's no reason, there's no doubt in my mind that we could do a lot better, uh, locally. Find somebody that would go get the machine, uh, and really that's, you know, fairness to our local people, we would try to do things locally. Um, you know, I'm a believer in that as well. Um, and not to say that, you know, they would give us a lesser a price, but, um, when I, the machine I had to ship from Kentucky and I had somebody look for a, uh, a shipper out in that area, they were more expensive than people in this area. So people from this area went and picked up that machine.
Jay, basically the motion gives you that, that leeway to, number one, buy the machine based on whatever you can negotiate up, up to that, up to that point, and then get it here, hopefully within the seventy-five thousand.
Yep.
That would be totally up to you.
Yeah, I agree. Did anybody wanna second the motion? We actually didn't have a second before we discussed it.
I'll second it.
Got to.
Is that Dave?
That was.
All right. Um, board discussion, further board discussion or any other questions for clarifications for Jay or Eric? I mean, to me, this sounds reasonable. Um, you know, we certainly can't go out and buy a new sweeper now and, and we've seems like we absolutely got everything out of the last one that we can have a right to expect. Um, you know, the, the maintenance costs themselves are gonna continue to rise if you can even get parts, which as Eric has pointed out, has been a challenge. Could be a challenge for, so, you know.
Down to John's for scrap metal.
Any other?
We'll find a buyer for it. They're still out there. They do make good parts machines. Those old ones are hard to find, but they're not worth keeping for.
Kurt hasn't been optimistic about finding a buyer.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions or comments, discussion? All right, hearing none, let's put it to a vote. Um, you've got the motion before you. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. Hopefully this will, uh, turn out to be a good deal for the town. It sounds like it, it, uh, it will be, so. Okay. Um, I think the only other item on our agenda is public speak. Anybody like to speak? Is he, uh, looks like Joanne is on.
I think it's a good move for the town. I'm sure that there's not a lot of these machines around, so.
Yeah.
Hope it works out.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems to be the case, so. All right, well, um, any other public speak? Okay, I guess that's it. Last is to go ahead and close the meeting. Have a, anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
And Louise seconds. All in favor? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion is carried. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you spending a little time on your weekend to, uh, to do this. I think it's prudent that we move quickly once we find a good opportunity and, and hopefully it all work out. And, uh, we'll look forward to hearing, uh, the results.
Have a good rest of the weekend.
Guys, you too. Take care of yourself. Stay healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Jay. You're on mute.
There we are, still here.
Yep.